Hearing for the Oak Park closure. We need by statute to have the superintendent address you at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is for the Stillwater area school board to listen to public comment regarding the proposal to close Oak Park Elementary, Withrow Elementary, and Marine Elementary schools. The administrative team is proposing the closing of these schools for the following reasons. Declining enrollment, we are a district of eighty-three-hundred built for ten thousand students. To provide more equitable learning opportunities for all of our students across the entire school district. To address the future capacity concerns that are a result of the grade configuration change and declining enrollment capture rate. And to provide systemic alignment and allocation of human and financial resources that position the school district for the future. The decision to close a school is anguishing. It affects parents, neighborhoods, communities, district personnel, and of course, our students. We recognize that closing schools alters not only district operations but also lives. A decision to close schools however amidst circumstances of declining enrollment, decreasing capture rates, and economic necessity is fiscally responsible. And while the immediate effects of closing a school may be painful, the long-term effects can be beneficial to everyone. The long-term plan proposed addresses the learning needs of our students by capitalizing on the efficient and effective use of our current facilities. And with that, I'll turn it back to Board Chair Hepner.
Thank you. To encourage community participation and to conduct these hearings efficiently, the following processes have been established for people who wish to address the school board. Each individual will be given up to five minutes to testify before the school board. To ensure all have equal time, individuals may not merge allocated speaking minutes or defer allocated minutes to other speakers. Individuals addressing the school board should provide their name and address, including city, and identify any group they are representing. Individuals must present testimony in a respectful and professional manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, or abuse, or specific complaints identifying staff or students will not be permitted. Written statements may be provided to school board members by individuals who do not wish to speak. If you wish to provide a written statement, please make eight copies to be distributed to board members and the superintendent. The school board will not respond to or discuss comments but will consider all public input gathered during these hearings. Electronic presentations may be permitted with advance notice but must fit within the speaker's five minutes. Please contact Barb Prue at three-five-one-eight-four-five-five. The board chair will terminate the remarks of any individual that does not adhere to the established guidelines. As superintendent said, tonight is a time for us to listen to public comments. In order to do so efficiently, we will use the two microphones that you see at the end of each aisle. We'll ask for a speaker, for someone to be on deck, and someone to be in the hall. And there are spots up in front reserved for the next speaker. Barb and Carissa will call you up front if you would please listen to them. And then they'll let you know when you have one minute left in your five minutes, and they'll also let you know when you've reached the five-minute limit. I guess we're ready.
All right. With that, our first speaker is Kater Howard, followed by Michelle Diesel, and then Ann Kober, if you'd all make your way up front, please.
My name is Kater Howard, and I'm the parent of a second grader at Oak Park Elementary School. I'm also the pastor of First Presbyterian Church in Stillwater, which is located two blocks from Oak Park Elementary. I want to thank all of you for the time that you give to our community and for serving on the board and on the staff. My family loves Oak Park Elementary.
Just could you give us your name and address?
Sure.
Your address, I guess is what we needed.
I actually have it here.
Oh, you do have it?
Yeah.
All right, we're set then.
Okay. So, Kater Howard. My family loves Oak Park Elementary and its staff and teachers. We even bought our house within its boundary because we wanted our kids to go there. We love the diversity of Oak Park. Cultural and racial diversity, economic diversity, and also the diversity of learning styles and abilities. It's a wonderful eclectic community made up of traditional classes in the Gate program, and the preschool program, and the autism program. And while I'm concerned about my own children having to go somewhere else, I'm much more worried about what closing this school would do to the many low-income families who attend Oak Park. A quarter of the students are on free or reduced lunch. Many of these families live within walking distance of the school, many of them in subsidized housing. First Presbyterian has been in partnership with Oak Park Elementary for well over ten years to serve its families. We send thirty tutors a week to the school to help with math, and reading, and even sometimes art and poetry. We send dozens of backpacks every fall and respond immediately when there is a need for winter clothing or snow pants in a particular size. We've also been working with Valley Outreach for the last few years to deliver up to seventy-five snack packs a week on Fridays, so that children who often go hungry on the weekends will have enough food to get them through to Monday. It's taken years to build this relationship of trust with school administrators and teachers and families, but it's worth it when you can see a community coming together to help each other. And this school plays a critical role in the lives of all of our families in the community. Oak Park families also take care of each other. It's amazing to watch how the residents of the nearby apartments around the school parent together in community. Many of the children play together on the playground after school, which keeps them out of trouble. Many Oak Park parents do not have their own transportation, and Stillwater has no reliable local public transportation. I worry that busing these kids across town will leave them behind. How will their parents get them to school if they miss the bus? Will they just stay home and miss school? What about on days when it's too cold to stand outside for long? How will they pick them up early if they're sick? How can neighbors pick up sick children so that working parents don't have to miss work and have their paycheck cut? How will they make it to teacher conferences or participate in school activities? I ask you to take your time and look for other solutions. I know that there's incredible pressure on you to make wise financial decisions, but I urge you to consider these families and these children, and do what's best for them and for all of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle Diesel, followed by Ann Kober and Chris Perdue.
My name is Michelle Diesel, and I have a son and daughter who attend Oakland Junior High. My address is twenty-seven eighty-three Legion Avenue North, Lake Elmo. I have taught for the St. Paul Public Schools, Trinity Catholic School, and was a substitute teacher for Stillwater area schools. Currently, I'm a facilitator for the classroom partnerships and an advisor for Love and the Skin Eye Men. Both programs are offered through the East Metro Integration District. And from my experience, these programs are designed to celebrate and enrich the learning experiences of students. I'm glad that Stillwater area schools is a member district. I'm here representing my children because I believe that they have a right to an equitable education, and I'm looking for the district to make an investment in all students across the board regardless of their economic circumstances, or racial or culturally background. My children attended Lake Elmo Elementary at the time of their enrollment. Andy Fields was their principal, and later Stephen Gordy. The teachers made my children feel welcome, successful, and they provided a vibrant learning environment. I could see that Mr. Fields and Mr. Gordy were committed to creating community and truly valued my insight and input. I'm glad that Mr. Fields is the principal of Oakland Junior High. As a substitute teacher in the district, I witnessed teachers who had a genuine concern for the education of their students. I could see learning happening. I have no doubt that one could find student-centered leadership and brilliance of teaching throughout Stillwater area schools. I know that you have to make a difficult decision. I believe that you and the leadership team do not want to close schools, but here we are. Schools are our life's fabric. Schools connect people to people and bring vitality to a community. I have attended many school board meetings, and I have come to believe that you're committed to providing an exceptional education for all students. Tonight, I'm recalling the superintendent's search process. Mr. Patashin, I remember meeting with you at Caribou Coffee in Stillwater to discuss the search process. You explained that the district will seek input from the community, and you encouraged me to get on a committee, which I did. I have to say the process that you talked about mirrored the search for a superintendent. I joined the parent committee, and we interviewed several candidates. We had to give our feedback to the board members. I remember that teachers, principals, staff, and community members were included in this process. I don't think that you, the board, was casting an image. I think you truly wanted to find a student-centered, community-creating leader. After much deliberation, the board was offered, the board offered the superintendency to Mrs. Pontrelli. I remember that evening when you publicly casted your vote for Mrs. Pontrelli. In fact, if I recall correctly, you motioned for the board to unanimously accept her superintendency. From my experience, the board diligently and transparently conducted the superintendent's search. As a result, the board, along with the input from teachers, principals, staff, and community members, hired the best candidate. Why would anyone confidently, publicly cast their vote for Superintendent Pontrelli and then doubt her leadership when a hard decision has to be made?
Thank you. I need your five minutes. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ann Kober, followed by Chris Perdue and Keri Klechka. I apologize for that. You got mine right.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Ann Kober. I live at fourteen-thirty-six Macy Way, and the group I am representing tonight is the Kober family. I am here tonight to voice the importance of choice. I believe in keeping choice for Stillwater area families, and this will create sustainability for students now and into the future. Choice, I actually think it's defined by my neighborhood. You can check this out, this is the absolute truth. Two doors down, Stonebridge Elementary, my neighborhood school, kindergarten. Next door, my neighbor Suzanne has a kindergarten at Withrow. Across the street, four kids, they go to Rutherford. Next to me, they go to Lily, and then my family goes to Oak Park. That is Stillwater choice in one street in Stillwater. Oh, I forgot. Family across the street this way, St. Craig Prep. It is also defined at Oak Park, where my kids are alternatively enrolled. So their very best friend, two of my boys have the very best friends of this year. My second grader has a best friend that just moved from Australia, believe it or not, moved into the Stillwater area, not Stillwater people. They moved here because of the schools. Jackson, my third grader, his little best friend, just moved here, again, from out of the Stillwater district, not Stillwater people, moved specifically to Oak Park, interviewed Nate Cox, went to and moved into the neighborhood, walkable distance, because of Oak Park. Two families that were not Stillwater people here because of Stillwater, and because of Oak Park specifically. Where do families seek their information for school? Online, blogs, Twitter, Facebook? Word of mouth is huge. I am amazed by the families that are going to bat for your public school. You should be so proud. Why do families choose Woodbury, Matamita, St. Craig Prep, private schools? Stillwater schools need to show that they are getting more, not less. You keep telling us that you're going to get more equitable learning experience, but I'm going to be honest with you, this plan feels like less. In closing, why do you think McDonald's offered all-day breakfast? Why is Amazon delivering packages with drones? Why do we stream Netflix instead of pay-for cable? It's choice. We already lost twenty-eight percent of the possible students. We need to focus on why these families left our school. We need to figure out how to get them back to Stillwater and not decrease accessibility. We need to show Stillwater residents that our public school is better than the alternative. This full decision could be that slippery slope to losing more families, to all the things that we are discussing tonight. Decrease the threat of declining enrollment. Show the community that we put our families' views and our students' first. If you want to plan for capacity, show the parents of the new millennium more choice, not less.
My name is Chris Perdue. I have a first grader and preschooler at Oak Park, seven-twenty-three Orleans Street. My wife and I moved to Stillwater three years ago. We started our search for a new community with our number one concern being schools, class sizes and school ratings specifically. We chose Stillwater as we were under the impression the district was stable, levies were passed to increase tax funding, and I'll see you well. After the initial shock of listening to the proposal to close the schools, I wanted to give the proposal a chance, as I'm always in favor of bettering the community. After hearing the proposal, here are the items that stuck out to me. Capping class sizes at twenty-five, doing away with the pink slip policy, and the expansion of the Gate program. As I said, class sizes were the main reason my family moved to Stillwater, so I was happy to hear that the proposal wasn't going to keep them at the size my son's class currently is at. I find it difficult to keep a happy work staff when you fire and rehire them annually, so stopping that process is logical. I also educated myself on the Gate program and the struggles with funding, so expanding that also seems good for the community. Sadly, I'm confused on how the district gets there financially. The savings of one-point-two-six million dollars a year is thrown out often, but it's difficult to believe this will come to fruition. Many parents have asked how transportation costs have been calculated, and the responses I have seen can best be called fuzzy math. Parents have asked what schools their children will attend and if this proposal passes. This legitimate question is answered with it's too much work and will be done after the proposal. I have personal questions I like answers to, such as if this proposal passes, where will my child attend kindergarten next year? Will he go to Oak Park or to a yet-to-be-determined school after the boundaries are drawn? If he gets to the new school, where will my other son go? Can he follow him, or will he stay at Oak Park? I know these questions will be answered, but it would have been nice to have them up front. I looked into the data, both the bold and the stop old cold sides, and I'm confused on how statistics were calculated. I honestly feel this idea should have been left on the whiteboard, because I don't believe it's ready for a vote. I wonder what other ideas were proposed, both from the administration side and from the community, and what impact analysis were done with those proposals. Please vote no, as I don't think this proposal's ready today. I honestly don't envy you people on the school board, because whatever you vote, it's going to be difficult to move forward. I just hope that you make sure that the proposal is well-vetted and that the community is in mind going forward. So, thank you.
Followed by Amy McDonough and Colin Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Keri Klechka. I reside at thirteen-thirty Third Avenue South, Stillwater. I have an Oak Park Elementary first grader and a first-year preschooler at Lake Area Discovery Center. There's been a lot of talk about community over the past few weeks. Community for friends, familiarity, socialization, and a sense of togetherness. But what about when your community is responsible for your basic needs? And suddenly, you are removed from that community. Twenty-five percent of Oak Park Elementary students receive free and reduced lunch. Up to seventy-five families receive snack packs to help provide supplemental snacks and prepackaged meals to be consumed over the weekend and school breaks. These snack packs are packaged each week by volunteers from neighboring First Presbyterian Church. Where will these families get the basic need for a food for their children? Is there a plan when providing equitable education for all students that includes who will package their meals so they don't go hungry over the weekend? Will their new principal know whose families don't have cars and would need a ride home if they missed the bus? Is there a plan for parents who don't have cars to get to conferences, school plays, and other activities? Oak Park Elementary has over seventy-five families who walk to school every day. I am one of those families. We are on a bus route, but we choose to walk. Many don't have this choice. For many, this is their only option. First Presbyterian Church also provides thirty-two tutors every Wednesday to Oak Park Elementary. This is an amazing amount of volunteers in just one day. This program is tried to be replicated in other schools in our district, to no success. The administration says that the teachers will go with the students to their new schools, but what about the invaluable tutors that help on a weekly basis to educate our children? These are neighborhood volunteers. Many of them are senior citizens. They won't be able to go further from their home to continue this program. It hasn't worked anywhere else. It is unique to Oak Park Elementary. What about our parent volunteers? Many parents from Marine and Withrow won't be able to volunteer between preschool drop-off and pickup. There simply isn't enough time. Where will our schools be with a lack of volunteers? My family and I include Gate and the ASD program in our community. We are greatly concerned for the Gate students moving to the middle school. Before Oak Park Elementary, Gate was housed at the junior high. It was deemed inappropriate to have such young children at a junior high school. What has changed to make it appropriate today? When the boundaries changed in two thousand and eleven, Oak Park Elementary was purposely given smaller boundaries to ensure room for Gate. Why are our children being uprooted due to shortsightedness? Will the Gate program follow the middle school hours or elementary school hours? Will buses be shared? Will third graders be on the same bus as an eighth grader? If busing is separate, will this increase transportation costs? Where will their, where will their playground be? What is that cost? Where will the money come from? Third, fourth, and fifth graders need time to play outside. Currently, families feel their Gate students are out of touch with their peers. How does taking them away from kids their own age help the socialization piece that is so vital to a well-rounded education? Would the ASD program moving to Rutherford have costs been determined to add closed classrooms? What are these costs? How will they be paid for? Where will these classrooms be placed? Will it be at the expense of another colony at Rutherford? Do these parents know about these changes and how they will affect their children's education? There's been talk that Stonebridge will be moving to half-traditional, half-open. Is this true? Do parents know about this? Do they want this? What are these costs? How will they be paid for? These are just a small handful of all the unanswered questions I have and others have around this plan. I encourage you, as our elected officials, to seek acceptable answers to all of our questions before voting on this proposal. The community deserves answers to these questions as well. We shouldn't pretend anyone understands all of the intended and unforeseen consequences should our schools be closed. The stakes for our children, our school district, and communities are too high to vote yes on this plan as proposed. Thank you.
Followed by Colin Kelly and Brenda Gettle. Sorry, you didn't hear that? Okay. So this is Amy McDonough, followed by Colin Kelly and Brenda Gettle.
Hi, I'm Amy McDonough, and I live at nine-oh-seven Sixth Avenue South, which is right in the heart of the South Hill neighborhood. And I'm speaking on behalf of the McDonough family today. I also did want to mention, though, that I'm also a member of the Community Action Network, which is a parent online group. It was created when we were all working to pass the two thousand and thirteen levy, and that group hasn't taken a position on this particular proposal, but there's a lot of Oak parents that were involved in that group as well, so I just wanted to mention that. I have a second grader at Oak Park and a fifth grader at Oak Park, and then my daughter Grace is in junior high, and she went through, she finished Oak Park a couple of years ago. I was really happy to just accidentally be able to sit by the Oak Park staff today because Oak Park is the kind of school that really attracts really great teachers who want to do good things for all kinds of different kids, so I just, I think they're great people, and I'm glad that they're here tonight. I want to talk a little bit about the uniqueness of Oak Park and why I think that, although I agree with the, with the goals of Bold, I agree that we should work on equitable education district-wide, I just think that you really have the wrong school here. I'm a parent, so I've been at a lot of sporting events, and I know the difference just in, between Rutherford and Lake Elmo, and I feel like a lot of this conversation about Bold has been kind of pointing that out, that we have some big disparities in the district. And I get that, because you can just kind of tell. We were at Stonebridge when my daughter was in kindergarten, and I noticed even going from Stonebridge Bridge to Oak Park that there was a disparity. Oak Park has, is really just, has been the underdog school. It's been, for years, it's been, just funded differently. So it's, it doesn't really show up in the numbers and the charts as much that, that you've probably seen from the district, but I think you've heard tonight that there's a, really a concentrated group of lower-resourced or under-resourced families that really rely on Oak Park. And I really worry that with this proposal, there are going to be too many of those families that are going to fall through the cracks. My, my kids will be okay. We went through a transition of moving schools, and it's hard, it's stressful, but we'll be okay. But there's a lot of parents that aren't represented here tonight who, who've never set foot in Oakland Junior High, and who really, I think, aren't, don't understand why this is happening to Oak Park, and I, I just worry that this is, in the long term, we're going to regret this. We have a really great neighborhood of volunteers that come in and, and help these kids, and they're going to lose, but just, just because of that transition, they're gonna, they're going to, there's going to be some kids who fall through the cracks, and I know that's not the intention of the board. I know that's not the intention of Denise and Bob. I know that you're actually trying to do the opposite, but again, I just feel like you have the wrong school. If, if that's our goal, is equitable, equitable education across the district, we just, we have the wrong school. And I guess I would also like to say that I, I support this new superintendent and the new administration. I very much want her to succeed, and I think that we can still succeed, and we can still do this, we just have to go back to the drawing board. We just have to send it back to the administration and say, we need to come up with some other plans. There wasn't enough time, really, for Oak Park parents especially, to learn about this and to come up with new ideas. I know that, you know, there's been talk in the past few years about Withrow and Marine, but not of Oak Park, not since I've been a parent at Oak Park. So it's new, it's really new. From December seventeenth to now, it's just not enough time for the Oak Park community to get their arms around this and come up with other solutions, so. I think that there's a way that we can still be bold, we can, you know, we can just ask them to come up with more plans and, and plans that we can all support. Maybe we'd get to the same conclusion, but I just think that it just would be a healing process for the community if we were given some more time and some more proposals. So, thanks.
Colin Kelly will be followed by Brenda Gettle and Erin Wolfe.
Hi. My name is Colin Kelly, and I live on First Street South in Stillwater. My daughter Brooke goes to Oak Park. Tonight, I speak to you not only as a dad, and as a concerned citizen, but as a professional planner trained in effective public participation, and as a recent graduate of the state's Emerging Leaders Institute, I would like to address three topics. High quality, number one, high-quality, effective planning processes. Number two, aligning actions and beliefs. And number three- And number three, respecting what and those who have come before you. But first, a little background. Though my wife and I moved to Stillwater almost ten years ago, we are new to the district. Our daughter started kindergarten - get choked up sometimes - at Oak Park last fall, and my son would start kindergarten there in the fall of seventeen or eighteen. We love living in Stillwater. We live on the South Hill and regularly walk and bike to Oak Park. This walkability is important to us, and we feel that physical activity before and after school has many benefits. Our neighborhood school is important to us. In fact, when weighing the decision of whether Brooke would attend St. Croix Prep or Oak Park last year, we chose Oak Park because we wanted our daughter to go to school in her neighborhood and with diverse classmates who live on her street or nearby. So, if you want to use technical terms, that means we've contributed positively to the district's capture rate, at least until now. If the BOLD proposal passes, the district's capture rate will decline. Sadly, my wife and I will likely pursue options outside of the district and may consider moving away if no better options exist. So, what does a high-quality effective planning process look like? As a professional planner, I can tell you that it does not look like this. Significant plans for major proposed changes Significant plans for major proposed changes require a proportional timeframe for all affected stakeholders to consider their proposal, voice their perspective, and most importantly, consider alternatives. Effective planning processes identify what's known as a quote "preferred alternative", but they also identify one or typically several other possible approaches. To date, only a single proposal has been offered, and there appears to be no apparent willingness on leadership's part to modify the approach or entertain any other possibilities. What has transpired since December 16th is simply unacceptable and exhibits a poor understanding of public trust on leadership's part. If you believe integrity, honesty, transparency, and accountability are important, your actions do not currently align with these values and beliefs. A good leader is also a good listener and is responsive to what they hear. Rather than stonewalling, a good leader will acknowledge, respond, and act on stated concerns. So, I urge you to answer the questions raised, not with glossy generalities and buzzwords, but with specific details about the proposal and how it will impact children at Oak Park, Marine, Withrow, and every school in the district. Allow for discourse, not just one-way communication. Consider other options. Allow the community to help develop and have a real say in those options. Act with integrity. Lead openly and honestly. Superintendent, you have said that it wasn't you or your administration that made promises to residents of the district, yet the information and dialogue leading up to the 2013 levy and 15 bond were unambiguous. Closing schools was never a part of the plan. You are free to keep telling yourself and us that those promises are not yours, that a past administration or school board is responsible for such claims. But every time you do that, you erode the trust in the district that was building up until the email sent on December 16th. Thank you. You see, even if you weren't steering the ship at the time, it was still district leadership, and that's who and what you are. You are the face of district leadership today. But district leadership and initiatives span administrations, and its impact has a very real implication on our community. You didn't scrap the bridge to excellence because it wasn't developed by your administration, did you? Why suggest that? Because something happened, quote, "before your time" that you don't have to be held accountable? District leadership may change, but the people you serve, your constituents, the students, parents, and citizens of Independent School District 834, well, we remain the same. It is imperative that you respect those who served the district before you and the communities that have been here for generations. To close, my daughter Brooke absolutely loves Oak Park. Her principal, Mr. Cox, her teacher, Mrs. Regis, and all of the friends she has made there. Her life is being changed for the better every day because of the quality instruction and caring professionals at Oak Park. Thank you. Just a little bit longer. My wife and I love living in Stillwater and raising our kids.
I'm sorry, we can't let you go a little bit longer.
Okay. Board, I implore you, please vote no to the BOLD proposal on February 11th. Our future depends on it.
Brenda, followed by Erin Wolfe and Brandon Wolfe.
My name is Brenda Gettle. I live at 723 Sixth Street South here in Stillwater, Minnesota. I had several things I wanted to say tonight, but due to our five-minute time limit, a lot of these people are covering my concerns as a taxpayer. So, instead, I will tell you my story. I'm here to represent the Oak Park Marine, Withrow students, and all others who will change schools due to boundary changes. I grew up here in Stillwater, Minnesota, and I went to Washington Elementary School. I remember my principal, Mr. Graham, all my teachers, Mrs. Ingelbrethson, Mrs. Maury, Mrs. Jogish, Mrs. Frederickson, and Mr. Conom. When I was in the fourth grade, I learned that my school would close, and I would need to change schools. I would be sent to Oak Park. My best friend would be sent to Lily Lake. I remember riding to Oak Park one day at the end of my fourth-grade school year, and I was assigned to another student to show me around. I remember exactly who she was, and I remember her telling me, pointing out different students, "This person belongs to this group. This person belongs to this group or this clique." I was confused. We did not have that at our small school. Where would I fit in when I moved there the next year? When I started in fifth grade at Oak Park Elementary School, I was assigned to the May 5-6 classroom. This was open. It was two different grades, and this was new to me. It was very scary. I began immediately searching to see who I would fit in with and who would my friends be. I didn't care about school at this point. I wanted to know where did I fit in. I was invited to work on the school play background. This was exciting to me. This was something fun. I brought treats every day that I shared. We'd go down in the morning. We'd work on this background. The students of my class did not like this, so they set out to get me in trouble. They tried to make up stories so that I would be removed from working on that school play. I remember when I was in fifth grade, I had mononucleosis. I was picked on relentlessly. You have the kissing disease. I was out on the playground, and I was by myself over by the side of the school crying. Thankfully, a sixth grader did come to check on me and find out what was wrong. I remember the day my mother rode the school bus to me, to school with me, because I got in trouble with the new friends. She didn't like my new friends at the school. I was removed from my classroom, and now I was put in another classroom. Unfortunately, I do not remember the teacher's name. I now had to leave classroom to attend other, my other subjects. This also was new to me. I remember the boy in class who flicked me in the eye and gave me a black eye. Most of you, or some of you, will remember where you were when President Kennedy was shot. A lot of you remember where you were when the Space Shuttle Challenger blew up. Most of us here remember where we were when the World Trade Center was attacked. I still remember exactly where I was the day I was told my school would close. This is no small sacrifice made for these children. I hope you will slow down and take time to consider this before you vote.
Erin Wolfe. Erin Wolfe will be followed by Brandon Wolfe and Kristy Mack.
Good evening. My name's Erin Wolfe, and I live at 317 Churchill Street East, Stillwater, Minnesota. I'd like to spend some time tonight reflecting on portions of the BOLD plan that I still have questions about. The most important thing to myself and our community is how our children are being planned for. How will our district act in order to guarantee a successful transition for all of our students if this plan is enacted upon? I'm concerned about who will fall through the cracks. Our school families Our school families support students living near to Oak Park that have families that are simply working hard to make ends meet. I believe that kids do well if they can. What our building currently does is give a safe environment where children who need extra to be able to do well are recognized and given what they need. Does this plan set our children of our neighborhood up to do well? Our students that do not have transportation reliably with their parents are able to walk to our school building. Their parents are able to be active in our school community regardless of ability to own a car or fill that car with gas. Our school helps to take care of many families that are working hard to give their families shelter and food to cover their basic human needs. Oak Park's proximity and ability to recognize what is needed are valuable resources to these families. So, I would like to ask, what is the plan? Who is in charge of that plan? What does this proposal prepare to give our kids for their sacrifice? Our children are facing losing everything that they know. What is this plan going to do to guarantee our children's success? What thought has been given to our kids? We understand the thought given to the students in the south end of the district and the other schools and their needs, but what about our children and the impact to our children? Your job as our elected representative is to do what is best for our community. You need to ask on our behalf for an option B. This decision is being made now, before we know anything about boundaries or funding for programs or funding for all of the changes that are becoming clear we will need to take place across the district in each school to make these plans come to fruition. The timeline is too fast, and the task list is only growing. We need to ask for things to slow down. We need time to make sure that decisions are being made in our children's best interest. It is not clear why we are closing Oak Park. We understand that many other schools were also considered, and the fact that Oak Park was chosen simply because it would potentially make the best office space and because it has ample parking is wrong and insulting. Oak Park isn't the problem. The building currently has the required capacity. However, we do seem to be the easiest solution. You expected that Oak Park wouldn't put up a fuss, that the families from our school would be quietly unaware or unable to voice our concerns. But we are here, and we are using our voices to speak for all of our students. There was never a meeting held in the apartments near our school or at the church next door to our school grounds that our parents without transportation could attend. Some of our parents have never set foot inside of the junior high blocks from our houses, much less knowing where Oakland Junior High is. They don't know where we are tonight. It is disingenuous to offer public meetings on a closing a community school that in essence preys on people without the ability to be present to hear the proposal. It has not offered any alternative times or dates for the same people to make their voices heard. I plead for the time to offer additional community gatherings that will make it equitable for all to attend. We have gone too far down this road. The only solution is to take this back a step and rethink about what action plans we can actually deliver on. I know that we all want to see the superintendent succeed. We have had too many leadership turnovers in too many years. I am encouraged to hear that the superintendent wants to stay. But we do need to have a collaborative culture where we all can contribute our success. Public schools are a governmental system in which taxpayers should have a say in what they want their schools to be. You, as a board, do have a choice to back out of this plan and demand a review of other options. You have a chance to knit our community back together to continue to build the trust in our district administration and our school board that has already begun to erode. You of the school board can make a decision that transparency and open communication are required when making a community decision of this magnitude. We are fracturing our community. Our trust in our district is to do what is best for children, and we really need to be intentional about how we plan for that. We cannot do that in a hurry.
Brandon Wolfe. Brandon will be followed by Kristy Mack and then Kristen Winiger.
Hello, my name is Brandon Wolfe, and I also reside at 317 Churchill Street East. So, speaking of options, I would like to address what we've heard about this proposal and if it'll work for Stillwater. What we need to know, what we have a right to know, is if data has been reviewed about districts that are in a similar situation to what we are. Where are those districts today? So, let's look at Robbinsdale. Much like you, that board depended on the superintendent's recommendation to make the right decision. Like you, they had a very limited time to digest a tremendous amount of information that would impact many areas, schools, programs, communities, and people for years into the future. I see a parallel in our timeframe and the short timeframe that the school board in Robbinsdale was asked to make a huge decision. In Robbinsdale, the effects the closings had on the district were huge and were not foreseen by the board. The allotted time given in the process to do things clearly and appropriately was a shortfall. No one from the board ever directly asked for teachers' opinions. The number of families that left the district was much higher than anticipated. Had they taken all the stakeholder input, they would have been able to see more clearly the future impacts and try to make a clearer decision. In Robbinsdale, adult education was forced to move locations. The location prior to the school closing was on a bus line located around many apartment buildings that housed the populations the program served. The new location is now on the other end of the district, remotely located off the bus lane and surrounded by a community that does not have the same need for the program. Adult education currently serves only about fifty percent of the students it once served prior to the closing. I see this as a direct connection to the population served at Oak Park Elementary. We serve families that use public transportation, that walk because they lack their own transportation, and are able to attend the school functions only because of their proximity to the school. Much like Robbinsdale, I think that if we fail to consider the impacts realized by these families when their child's school is moved away from their homes, we may be failing to realize that it is possible to see more truancy due to lack of transportation, community, and support, as well as a lack of involvement in a child's education. In Robbinsdale, the board's public statement was that the first-year space would be tight, and every year it would loosen up a bit. And by year five, the district would be right-sized. This information came from $70,000 worth of consulting that also included a recommendation to change the borders for the elementary schools. This seems eerily similar to what we're hearing and predicting from the info provided by Hazel Reinhardt to our school district. As a matter of fact, Ms. Reinhardt was used as a consultant in the Robbinsdale case. Her study there was used to recommend that Robbinsdale right-size their schools as well. Now, the district is overcrowded, looking to reopen schools that they closed and looking to try to fund additions to buildings due to overcrowding. Much of this is due to incorrect projections. Projections are not an exact science. However, using current data and trying to be exact as possible is important. While I respect, many school districts use Ms. Reinhardt's capacity studies and enrollment projections, I would ask that the board look closely at the data so our school district does not fall into the same situation that Robbinsdale faces. In our district's data from Reinhardt, she uses housing numbers from 2010 to 2012 to predict our growth. These years were part of a time period that the housing market was floundering. Home sales and turnovers were at historic low rates. However, the housing market in the year since 2012 has begun to recover. Home prices and turnover are returning to their status before the housing market crash. I asked the school board to consider data that suggests if we use the most recent three years to project our housing turnover, the numbers from 2012 to 2012 are actually depressed and will result in grossly inaccurate data. We need to slow down to consider all the different sides of this issue and all the different data. Our students deserve to know that if the board does make the decision to go forward with closing our community schools, that our students will not be faced with the challenge to adjusting new normal only to find that growth and enrollment projections weren't accurate. I know we all want to make the best decisions for our children of District 834. Please consider voting for more time and more data to make sure that we have the best possible plan as we move forward. Thanks.
Kristy Mack, followed by Kristen Winiger and Erica Shanno.
My name's Kristy Mack, and I live at 421 West Pine Street. And I'm representing my two children and my husband. My two children go to Oak Park. A huge opportunity was missed by not involving the community in the BOLD proposal at its infancy. There was an opportunity to involve highly motivated, intelligent, passionate individuals to work together to explore alternatives to the BOLD proposal. There could have been a collaborative effort and team, all moving in the same direction for the good of the whole community. This could have been a positive experience. Instead, the community was cut out of the planning process. The result is an atmosphere of mistrust. Even if all of the facts and figures of the BOLD plan are 100% accurate, which I don't believe they are, I am personally having a hard time believing anything that is presented to me as being the whole truth. If I've been cut out of this process from the beginning, then what else am I not being made aware of? Almost every single board member in their bios on the Stillwater Public Schools website has included statements about serving and representing the entire community. I don't see that happening. If the interests of the community were really being served, then all the voices raised in opposition to this plan would have been heard, and there would have already been a decision made to slow this plan down and give more time to explore alternatives. How can an informed and thoughtful decision possibly be made to accept or reject this proposal with little to no input from the community, including all stakeholders, parents being one of the most important, promote sustainable being one of the most important, promote sustainable decisions by recognizing and communicating the needs and interests of all participants? These are our children you are talking about. This proposal would be disrupting their own little communities they have built at their present schools. Our children's learning styles, their friendships with peers and teaching staff would all be disrupted. The relationship between the schools and their surrounding communities would be disrupted. Why should my children have their lives disrupted when there are so many holes being found in the bold proposal? I have a few questions and alternatives. It has been proposed to transfer the GATE program to the junior high. As a parent of a potential GATE attendee, I find it extremely concerning that nine- and 10-year-olds would be transferred to a building with children of a much greater maturity level. Even if GATE was given its own wing, you are essentially cutting off the GATE children from their peers. They will no longer be able to engage and interact with children of their own age within an elementary school setting. These children will be further isolated from the community of people they know. There's no playground at the junior high. Are you going to build one specifically for GATE students? How will they interact and play? In regards to the inequitable learning experiences I keep hearing about, my children go to Oak Park. I want to hear of an example of how they are being underserved simply because of the school they attend. Where are these inequitable experiences happening? I don't see it happening in Oak Park. If there are inequities within schools, then identify them and work to correct the situation. Don't punish others by closing their schools to correct the problem. If it's accurate that there are roughly 11,000 students in our community and the capture rate of the students is 72%, that means there are over 3,000 students in our community that we could direct marketing efforts towards to join or rejoin our schools. If we can get merely 4% or 120 students of those students to join our schools, and for each of those students, we receive roughly $10,000 per student, that would be the equivalent to the 1.2 million the administrators are saying we will save per year by closing down these schools. If we expend resources on a plan like this, this would obviously take time to see results, all the more reason to slow this process down. If it is true that all these schools are going to open within their walls, preschools, then I would imagine that would only help to increase the capture rate. By introducing young children via preschool programs to our elementary schools and by ensuring they have a good experience, I can see no reason why by kindergarten these parents would all of a sudden pull their students from a school they have grown familiar with and love to attend school elsewhere. This plan also needs more time to see results. Closing schools should be a last resort when no other options have been found to correct a problem. With the amount of ideas being generated, it is clear to me we are not out of options. If only the administration and the board would give time for those alternatives to be researched further. I personally will gain much more respect for each and every one of the administrative staff and board if the realization is made that there is value in slowing this plan down. I've heard the reasons why we shouldn't slow this proposal down, and it seems to me it all has to do with the amount of work the administration might have to do or redo. That is well worth it to avoid ripping apart communities and disrupting children's lives. Thank you.
Kristen will be followed by Erica Shanno and Melissa Dickhausen.
I'm Kristen Wienerger. I live in Lakeland, and I have to tell you I'm terrified to be up here because I don't necessarily share the same sentiments as most of the speakers that have already spoken. I'm here representing my children. I'm a parent of students at Afton Lakeland, at Oak Park Elementary, and at the Early Childhood Center. So I'll speak briefly to Oak Park first, since that's my oldest student. I am excited with the bold proposal, with the expansion, the potential expansion of GATE. The resources at GATE have been lacking, and that's been identified as a problem, and we all know this. With the expansion, the potential expansion of GATE at Stillwater Junior High, I am wholeheartedly jumping wide with my feet in. There are questions that need to be answered, of course, with any new plan, but for instance, my nine-year-old son is doing seventh grade math. Before he went to the GATE program, last year he was sitting in the hallway watching DVDs of math because there were no more resources for him, and he was in the GATE cluster in his school. Once he is done with all the math he can at a traditional elementary school, where will he go next if he's already at a junior high? There's opportunity for a higher level of educational support that is not necessarily there at a K through five school. Additionally, addressing the snack packs that a lot of other people have brought up, at Afton Lakeland, we also have snack packs. We send those home in many children's backpacks every weekend. It's through Valley Outreach. There are the volunteers that come and pack those. We have volunteers that pack those as well. I don't know how many other schools do that, but since it's through Valley Outreach and not a school effort, I would imagine that any school that needs it would have the support of Valley Outreach. I support the proposal because, over the past year in particular, but even the few years before that, Afton Lakeland has been kind of in a tumultuous or chaotic state. We need resources and support in the building that we're just not getting. This year, we are very fortunate to have an instructional support person for our teachers. We are really excited about that. We're hoping to see some results in our students and possibly our test scores, other things that we haven't seen in the past. That's one example of how supporting our teachers within our building can really make a difference. But there are inequitable differences between various schools when you share positions such as media or interventionists or psychologists, and it's not just Afton Lakeland. It's all over the district. Students every day are suffering because of that lack of resource in the Afton Lakeland building and make school a chaotic environment for themselves if they don't have the support they need. This also has the capacity to transfer home at the end of the day, making school a chaotic environment. Homework may not get done. It's not a priority when your life is in chaos. Our teachers are trying and doing so remarkably hard to work within their means, but they need better support within the building. Our staff has suffered due to such a resource-lacking time, and the end result is our students lose out on educational growth. Students in our building have transferred out of our building due to the uneven distribution of services and guidance support of the district. I'm not trying to accuse or point fingers. It's just a reality. There are, in particular, special education students transfer out of our building due to the lack of support that we have gathered in our building. I don't wish to make this a one-school centralized issue. It's entirely a district-wide inclusive plan. I have kids at three buildings right now. I drive all over the district a lot. Thank you. I just wish to illustrate that the current reality in the Southern Mill School is resources are not equitable across the district. Access to learning opportunities is not the same for each pre-K through sixth-grade student in our district, let alone within the building. Creating balance is a delicate but a current necessity. Resources should not be a southern-heavy or northern-heavy or only centrally-located issue. There shouldn't be a heavy or weak part of our district, and that's the current reality. District 834 should be a fully-integrated team where no personal bias or emotion stands in the way of a chance for the next inquisitive mind to learn and grow. Thank you.
Followed by Melissa Dickhausen and Ryan Severson.
Hi, I'm Erica Shanno. I live at 206 Fifth Street South in Stillwater, and I'm also part of the South Hill District. I have two children that go to Oak Park, one in fourth grade and one in sixth grade, and this does not affect them at all. But I'm fundamentally opposed to this, and I voted. I voted for two large sums of money that are now putting us in a position where we're going to close schools, and I don't think that that is the proper usage. So, one thing I want to talk about is when new schools are eventually needed due to school closures, because they will be, mark my words, the community will ask, "Why you closed three schools?" Our society is used to throwing away and replacing, but it's proven to be environmentally and financially unsound. In a program that spanned from 2005 to 2011 by the Pennsylvania Board of Education, the average cost per square foot of new schools is nearly twice the cost of renovations and additions, if all project costs are considered. I think closing schools will cause the need to build those new schools. We also need to ensure we're recycling, and recycling as a fresh school and not a new home for district administration. There are also costs that have not been provided to us for the proposed conversion. Renovating a building from one type to another has different costs. As stated by new construction versus renovation for older school facilities, if updating spaces to accommodate newer or different uses results in significantly, significant reconfiguration of walls, then costs will increase dramatically, and I suspect there will be reconfiguration heavily at Oak Park. Converting to a district administration facility for adults rather than for children is the wrong thing to do. Adults in district administration, adults, would receive the benefits already invested in the schools and changes that have been made to Oak Park for the kids. That's simply not appropriate. I also want to address health, people health. Schools accessible via walking and biking see lighter automobile traffic, can shorten trip distances, and can reduce motor vehicle emissions significantly. Kids in these populations become naturally more physically fit. This can extend to mentally fit. A study of 1,700 students from five cities in Spain found that adolescent girls who walked or biked to school were more likely to do better on standardized test measuring their verbal, numeric, and cognitive, overall cognitive skills. Community health. With respect to Oak Park, just because we don't have new homes being built around us, we're not dead. We have lots of beautiful, we have lots of beautiful old homes that young families are eager to move into and within walking distance of schools. Studies show that millennials are less eager to be dependent on cars and prefer walkable environments. The only school where kids can walk to both elementary and junior high is Oak Park. The effect of the new St. Crowe River Crossing also may bring unanticipated changes to the communities surrounding Oak Park. And finally, the numbers being used to reflect growth are questionable. New homes are a visible source of growth, but the annual turnover of 800 to 1,000 homes in the Stillwater School District should not be ignored. And since I have a little time, I'll touch on a couple other things that people have already mentioned, and that's about diversity at Oak Park. We do have a diverse population, including children with English as a second language, and those families rely on the closeness of the school to their homes. Taking those children out of the community to attend schools farther away could have detrimental effects. There are Oak Park parents that don't own cars, and while there are buses to take kids to school, parents don't have cars to visit the school for things like parent-teacher conferences or a sick child. As reported in the Washington Post, how closing schools hurts neighborhoods. Schools are often the one institution still surviving in low-income neighborhoods, and they serve as a point of pride and community.
Melissa Dickhausen, followed by Ryan Severson and Carl Blondin.
All right, good evening. My name is Melissa Dickhausen, and you have my address, right? I come in front of you today to express my concerns regarding the bold proposal. Last Friday, I took off work to go in and sit down with Denise, Bob, Kristen, and Carissa, so thank you for that. And the reason for that was I wanted to understand some of the, you know, those missing pieces that we didn't have answers to. And sitting there for those two hours, you know, the biggest thing that I came out of that with was that the bold proposal is not about money, for our budget is balanced this year and on track for next year. However, it's about programming, so not about money, about programming. And I had to keep going back to that question several times, and even after I left that office, you know, I had those questions burning, you know, what is this, you know, what is, how is this going to change, or what is the effect going to be? And, you know, and I, you know, went back to both of you and said, you know, "How is this going to affect it? What does the programming look like?" And I was told that they can't explain it. To me, that is unacceptable. How can the leaders of our administration not know what the programming will look like or what will actually be added, what will be changed with our current programming? You know, it's easy to show a graph of our capacity at Oak Park Elementary and show that we only have 300 students, when in reality we have around 468 students with the ASD and GATE students included. But then another publication from the district goes out to all families with the faceless children showing that each school, and it's cost per pupil. Sorry, I was trying not to be emotional. Okay, cost per pupil, yet the graph of Oak Park shows that we are the second highest. When I asked the district and questioned that and asked them if the GATE and ASD students were included in that, they said yes. To me, it is unethical to manipulate the data just to try to show what you want people to see. Doing so and having someone from outside looking in that's not in Oak Park, it's going to appear that we have a small school that costs a lot. Dang it. Some of the programming that was discussed was GATE and moving that to the junior high. Some people think it's great. Some people, you know, don't like the idea of moving third graders with sixth and eighth graders. And I was told that if parents do not like that it's moving to the middle school, that they would have the option to keep their child in the GATE program, in the cluster program, in their current school. And I understand that each school is supposed to currently have the cluster program, yet it may have fallen by the wayside. If we put the time and effort into making the GATE program efficient in the schools that are considered their home schools, then why do we need to move the GATE program to the junior high? It seems like there'd be more cost to convert that part of the middle school to the elementary school, and we would need additional specialist teachers to support this one program. Another area was the English-Spanish immersion school. This is not being finalized, but this is an interest in our district. Moving the ASD to Rutherford, when I heard this, I couldn't believe it. These students are comfortable where they are, and if you want, you know, to ship them into a building without walls, that sounds like a recipe for disaster. Okay, I'll have to skip. My biggest thing is that I feel like there's way too many holes in this. We talk about Swiss cheese, you know, as far as, you know, our programming goes, but this plan is full of holes, and we need to go back to the drawing board and come together as a community and really figure out how we can benefit all of our kids, not just the Southern District, you know, all of them. You know, we're looking at the Southern District of growth and how we can't displace those 286 kids, yet we're going to displace 750. Thanks.
Ryan Severson, followed by Carl Blondin and Katie Del Wiki.
Del Wiki, thank you.
Heather, thanks for taking our questions tonight and our comments. Appreciate it. I'm sorry. My name's Ryan Severson. My family lives off of Pine Tree Trail. I think it's in the computer there. My wife and I have two kiddos who attend Lily Lake Elementary, and we're both educators, and we chose to relocate our family two years ago to Stillwater, large part because we wanted our kids to enjoy the benefits of attending a community school, and we've been very, very happy with how that's been working. And we voted for the levies and the referendum and have been very excited to see and know that that was something the community valued. However, we're very concerned with kind of where our money is now sort of being and what we believe kind of redirected toward. I basically have one comment and then just a question. My first comment relates to capacity issues and sort of the numbers as we were having conversations before the last time the voters approved the levy or the bond. As we attended community meetings prior to that last referendum, the message from the district was talking about preschool programming and the importance of having preschool programming in each of the elementary schools. And one of the, I thought, strong points made by the district was the sixth graders, when they moved to the middle school with the new middle school program, they would then allow for additional room in the elementary schools to house the preschool program, and that it really wasn't possible to do both. And so by moving those sixth graders, that freed up capacity at the elementary schools to have that preschool program. And now what we're hearing is, now that the sixth graders are moving and we're going to have have preschool programming, now we have this capacity issue. And that, we don't understand how that works or how that played out. Then secondly, our question sort of relates to where all of the kiddos are going to go if you choose to close three schools, and kind of what the impact that will have on our existing schools. The community really needs to know what direction we're going here when it comes to those numbers. The timeline that's given is talking about redrawing the lines after you've made a decision to close schools, and that's really difficult to comprehend because I think the community, not just the community of the three schools that are being closed, will be impacted here by that decision. And the numbers at those buildings will be impacted by that decision. So we request specifically that the district disclose the new boundaries of each remaining open school so that the families of those children know where their kiddos are going to attend, and that decision, that disclosure of information needs to be public before those decisions are made. Furthermore -- Furthermore, we request that the district also then disclose the regular education class size for each and every class, K through five, in each of the existing buildings. And we understand that there are some classes that need to be smaller, but those classes can't be factored into average class sizes. We need to know K through five, what are, is it six hundred or seven hundred new kiddos across, spread out through these other schools? What's that going to do for class sizes after the new lines are drawn? All of that information, we feel we need to know before you make that decision. Sort of, just sort of the way this has been going, we're a little concerned that the sessions are sort of listening, but we really would like to hear some answers to a lot of the questions. I guess we'd really like to know when and where we'll see the answers to the questions being proposed tonight. Is that going to be online? Is it going to be somewhere else? We'd like to know that. And then lastly, you know, just would appreciate additional time and full disclosure of the information so our entire community has the opportunity to understand the implications of the choices being made. Thank you.
Carl Blondin, followed by Katie Delwick, sorry, and Chris Grubb.
Thank you. Carl Blondin, Stillwater, Minnesota. I come here in support of the bold proposal, not because I like the idea of closing down schools. I know it has to be done. I can only speak for myself. My wife graduated from Oak Park many years ago. My youngest attended Oak Park and graduated from there. It's a great school. It's a fun school, as I'm sure all the schools in the district are. I have to admit, when I heard the proposal, some of my neighbors won't like this, but I was sort of hoping Lily Lake would get cut, but it didn't. I didn't want to see Oak Park cut, but I understand. We can afford to keep every school open. I did have the honor of being asked to serve on the finance study group a year and a half ago, and I'm very well aware of the serious financial constraints this district faces and the limited income it has. And I admit, I have been a critic of some spending, but in all honesty, the courage of coming forward and saying that we need to close down some schools because of the excess capacity is the most intelligent and courageous decision I've seen a superintendent make in the twenty-two years I've lived in the district. I know it's hard. No one wants their neighborhood school closed down. We only have so many options. I asked the board to consider things carefully and make a decision, and it's hard because this decision is going to rend the district emotionally. But we are already paying the price because we are lighting, heating, maintaining, and ensuring space for so many extra students. We started the school year with thirty-two students at the secondary level. That's much too high. We are shortchanging all of our students if we do not efficiently use the space we have. And unfortunately, that does mean we have to close down schools. Nobody likes it. I don't like it. I am certain that you don't like it. It's a tough decision. And yes, it has rendered the community, there's been some animosity. I haven't liked it. In particular, I do not like the way our state senator, Karen Housley, and representatives Kathy Lomer and Mike Detmer disparaged our superintendent in their letter to the board. I found it crass, adolescent, and Superintendent Pontrilli, I want to assure you, that represents the prattling of the political class, not the hearts of the good, gentle people of this district.
Katie, followed by Chris Grubb and Nia. I apologize, Nia, I'm not sure how to say your last name.
Hello, my name is Katie Delwick, and during the 2017-18 school year, my oldest daughter will be part of the first ninth-grade class in the high school. My middle daughter will be part of the first sixth-grade class in the middle school, and my youngest daughter should be starting kindergarten at Oak Park Elementary. My husband and I feel blindsided by the proposal to close Oak Park Elementary. We voted in support for the levy because we thought by inserting ninety-seven million dollars into the district, we would be strengthening our schools, not closing them. We also feel deceived because we were promised that no schools would be closed. I have my MBA, and I work at a large financial firm as a business initiatives consultant. I deal with and implement change all the time. I know that change is difficult and emotional. What I have learned at school and on the job is that communication and buy-in are essential to establishing successful change. The current anger and deceit currently felt by parents is a direct result of the lack of communication done prior to the bold proposal. In order to educate parents and create the necessary buy-in, I find it incredibly arrogant that a first-time, first-year superintendent is proposing to close three schools, which have been open for decades, without providing any other options. At my job, if I tried to push an initiative through the week before Christmas without any prior communication impacting one-fourth of a division, I would be reprimanded. Part of being a strong leader is the ability to question yourself and allow others to challenge you. There is yet to be a chance for parents of the children that go to the elementary schools slated to close to engage in conversation with the district regarding this matter. We are either forced to listen quietly while the school board asks questions, or we are allowed to voice our questions without any answers. The perception of this is either our input doesn't matter, or that the district is afraid to engage in public discourse concerning this proposal. I want to understand all of the data behind this decision. I also want time to understand all the impacts and unintentional consequences. Many of the parents impacted by this proposal are the same parents that fought hard for the levy and bond. We are engaged and educated. If this recommendation passes, my heart will break for our community. I worry about the future levy and bonds that may be necessary to fund my kids' education, which won't be passed. I worry that highly engaged parents will leave the district. I worry about the reputation that Stillwater will gain in the larger community as a district divided. Please vote no. Thank you.
Chris Grubb, Nia Owencock, and Jennifer Howard.
Hi, I'm Chris Grubb. I live at 587 East Stagecoach in Oak Park Heights. We, my family has quite a bit of history with Oak Park. We're a third-generation Oak Park family, and we chose Oak Park despite the fact that my wife works at one of the private schools. We chose it because of diversity and the things that Oak Park offers, the community school, the walkability, and just the all-around community. And in some of the proposals, there's been talk about, you know, we can close buildings, we can close schools, but I would ask, churches aren't just a building, the White House isn't just a building, schools aren't just a building, they're the community that goes around with Also, as far as the bond and the levy, not only did we vote for it, we went out and stumped for it. We rallied people to vote for it. We badgered family members into saying, you need to vote for this, or it's going to be the future of the students later on down the line. So I have a fourth grader, a second grader, and a son that will be starting, or should be starting kindergarten at Oak Park next year. But we're not going to put him through three moves in three years if Oak Park closes. Like I said, my wife works at one of the private schools in the area, and we've already decided if this happens, we're going to move to the one of the, to her school. Part of the thing that I find the most difficult with the district is that instead of rallying and trying to market towards keeping our capture rate, we come up with a proposal to close three schools, affecting our capture rate long-term and making it a less desirable district. Within five miles of Oak Park Heights, there's St. Croix Catholic, Salem Lutheran, St. Croix Prep, and New Heights. Those are all viable options for this group that's standing before you in this room tonight, and I guarantee that all of them have considered those options if this proposal continues. That capture rate, like it's been talked about before, will decrease, and we will lose more state funding, which will cause more issues financially for the district. The way I see it, Oak Park Heights, or Oak Park Elementary has been kind of passed around, at least our neighborhood has been, between Oak Park and Bayport several different times. But we made sure we stayed it within the Oak Park Elementary boundaries so that our kids could go there. So the way I see it happening is that the kids from Oak Park Heights that go to Oak Park Elementary are probably going to be shipped down to Anderson. Some of the Lakeland kids will be shipped from Anderson down to Afton, and the Afton kids, some of them will be shipped to the new school. This is also going to happen the other way around. Where Stillwater kids from Oak Park are going to go to Lily Lake, Lily Lake kids are, so it's going to end up having a shock effect wave across the whole district, and students from all over the district are going to be shipped away from their home schools and away from the schools that they know to a different part of the district. Also in the proposal, Mr. McDowell, you mentioned a couple different times that we're looking at new school, new housing figures. According to Zillow, today, there's five hundred and seventy-two houses that are for sale in the district. So that's quite a bit of, you know, open houses that are, that people will be moving into. And I know not all of them are going to have kids moving into them, but if they ever plan on having kids, they're going to want a strong school district, and this isn't the way to Any of you know that are from Stillwater or have lived here long enough know that Stillwater is a community. It's not like suburbia. I grew up in Shoreview, there's no community there. Stillwater is a community. The other issue I have is our first glimpse at what the new, where everyone's going to be shifted to, is the proposal to move GATE to the Stillwater Junior High. My daughter is potentially a GATE student, and I don't feel comfortable with her as a fourth grader and a small fourth grader at that, going to school with eighth-grade pre-bus and boys. I mean, we all have known people that were pregnant in junior high, and you can't subject third grade and fourth graders to any of that conversation. A lot of it's already been said, but, so, some of those solutions that I kind of thought of, and believe me, this is nowhere near my subject as it proceeds, is that in the past, there's been talk about moving some of the school district into different schools, using the space that's available. In the corporate world, that happens all the time. Most people don't have, don't share an office with their bosses these days. A lot of people work from different locations. I don't see why the school district couldn't also move into the open spaces we have instead of shifting schools around. Also, in the corporate world, when you have financial problems, the common thing now is to downsize from the top up instead of from the bottom up.
Nia?
Hunter Cook?
Yep, thank you. Followed by Jennifer Howard and Alastair Dobie.
Great. Before I start, I just want to say thanks to Mrs. Schumacher, Mrs. Tate, Mrs. Sint, Mr. Cox, and all the Oak Park staff. You guys are just wonderful. [applause] All right, I'm going to go quick. Not much time here. Question one. At the sixty-seven-minute mark of the presentation, Dr. McDowell stated that he will guarantee the current capture rate of seventy-two percent will increase to eighty-five percent if we just lock in the E21 programming. Given all the risk involved, I think it's great that the board has gotten financial guarantees from the leadership team linked to the success of this plan. Well done, and I commend you guys for this. Can you please provide the public with details of these financial guarantees that the employees are making? Is it a percentage of their salary or a portion of their post-retirement benefits, or what is it? Question two. Do you all understand that there is no cost to the excess capacity you have been presented by the administration? The excess capacity in your schools should actually be looked at as a great opportunity for the district, not a problem to be solved by giving away assets so percentages on a spreadsheet can look better. We have buildings that we own that are fully paid for with space in them. They cost a lot to rebuild and replace. Let's keep those buildings and find a way to use that space. Again, this excess capacity costs us nothing. I want to make sure you understand that. If you sell two schools that have a replacement cost of, say, forty million dollars for mere one million dollars, now you've made this capacity cost something to us. That's a thirty-nine-million-dollar economic loss to the district. We can't handle that. Why would you ever consider this? It would seem irresponsible to throw millions of dollars away on the capital side of the district to save a few thousand dollars on the operating side. All of our money is green. Question three, and here's a bit of advice from me, someone that's worked as a finance executive in the two largest property companies in the world. And it's been said already, but repurposing our commercial real estate asset is not really a good plan. It's costly. You end up with an inferior building when you take a building that was built for one purpose, let's say a hospital, and try to convert it to another, let's say a health club. And this is why we're going to have difficulty selling these assets on the market, right? This just makes common sense. Well then, why are we as a district going to try to repurpose an elementary school, Oak Park Elementary, into a commercial office building? This is especially illogical, given we already own a commercial office building. The only way it would make financial sense would be to, as other people have said, keep the building operating as an elementary school and use that capacity to put an office space in. Again, the current plan seems really irresponsible. And finally, if you are committed to selling assets to reduce capacity, provide financial stability, and fund equitable programming, then wouldn't the obvious choice to meet all these goals be the new school in Woodbury? This would provide fifteen to twenty million dollars in cash over the current plan and have similar effects on capacity and programming. Why isn't this big considered? The administration's own analysis has highlighted the real estate market in Woodbury is really hot. Then that's where we should go look to sell. Hey, we're lucky. We don't use our assets to generate revenue, and we control school boundaries to create supply. Our schools can be located anywhere. All this talk about future growth, this is important when you're deciding on where to build a shopping mall, but not that important to a school district. Instead of making the most money possible, the administration plans to offload two old buildings in the woods north of Stillwater for a few hundred thousand dollars, and then dump money, converting a third into an office building. Our children deserve this money to be spent on them. Our teachers deserve this money to be invested in them, and our taxpayers deserve better care of this money from all of you. Selling Woodbury would have the least disruption on any of our current schools and children. The Valley Crossing kids are going to have to change schools anyway. They could be bused the same distance the administration is saying they'd be willing to bust the Marina Withrow kids under their plan. This all seems equitable to me, but honestly, I don't think we should sell any schools. What about other options, other opportunities, other ideas? The administration admits, hey, it's out of ideas. They could only come up with one. Slow down, give hell. I'm serious. Slow down. admits, hey, it's out of ideas. They could only come up with one. Slow down, get help.[592.32][592.32][applause] I'm serious. Slow down and get help. There are plenty of great things we could do as a district. We don't have to close schools. There are so many holes in their plan, both financial and strategic, it would take hours to cover them all. And I really hope the seven of you spend the next three days with an open mind, listening to what everybody has to say. We really need that from you. And if I have a second, my final comment to the administration is, you should let the facts lead you to a decision to close three schools. That's an idea we could support. You should not let the decision to close three schools, you should not let the decision to close three schools lead to the facts you choose to present to us. This is deception, and is the only thing that you have done that's been bold. Thanks for your time.[639.16][639.16][applause]
Jennifer Howard, followed by Alistair Dobie and Mitch Bartelt.
Thanks, Snail. That was awesome. My name's Jennifer Howard. I live at 313 Pine Street West in Stillwater. I have a first and fourth grader at Oak Park Elementary. While I'm not going to pretend that I have a background in administration or operations, I, my background is in organizational development and change management. So, I do a lot of consulting with professionals and business leaders to help lead them through organizational-wide change. Approximately 70% of all organizational change efforts fail due to lack of a clear vision, no buy-in, and concerns about security and loss. I will say, while the bold proposal, the philosophy on paper, to have equity of programming, sounds like a great idea, what I, when I met with the administration on January 4th, it really disheartened me to learn that there was not a plan, facts, or data to stand behind how we were going to pay for the bold proposal. So, while we all know that we are already in a shortfall, we say we have $1.26 million deficit, there has not been a plan in place to say, how are we going to pay for this equity in programming? So, similar to our vote for the Bridge to Excellence, we voted for that, we gave money. We are, currently don't have enough funding to pay for that entire plan. This is information that was exchanged at that January 4th meeting. So, when we talk about these philosophies on paper and these ideas that sound really, really good, these visions, that sound good on paper, and I understand there are schools out there, people who have children who need programming. I think we need to come up with our plan and understand how we are going to pay for it, before we vote for something that blindly we're hoping is going to work. Number two, no buy-in. You've heard several times tonight that there has not been community involvement in the decision. Concerns about security and loss, the third one. I think the loss for a lot of folks here tonight is real. When you talk about all of these people who live where they live because of the school, there are people who have bought land and built houses so their children can go to a certain school. There are people who live next to Oak Park Elementary because that is their only means to get their children to and from school. You pull the school out of the community, those are real losses for people, and there is real reason for people to be concerned. When I met with the district administration on January 4th, they told us that there were three concerns: capacity, equity in programming, and $1.26 million deficit. What I can say on a positive note, if anything has come out of this entire process, is that we have engaged parents. Never before in the district have I seen as many people come together to try to rally, to come up with solutions. I have met not only with people from Oak Park, that has strengthened our community there, I have met with parents from Withrow and Marine, who have come together as a community to try to figure out, how can we solve this issue? Our common goal that we all have is we want to strengthen the district. So, let's take advantage of this engaged population and come together to see how we can pull this together. Here's my proposal, and, you know, I work 50 hours a week, I travel for work, and I have a child in hockey, so I really have no time to make a formal written proposal for anybody. But here's what I think needs to happen, and here's what I would advise, here's what I advise all of the leaders that I work with. Give us more time. And Ms. Montrelli, I remember asking you on January 4th if we had any flexibility in the February 11th date, and you said yes. We do have some flexibility. So, February 11th is not a set-in-stone date that we cannot move. Let's have a collaborative working session with community and administration to look at these three issues that we need to solve. All groups working together need to look at the same data. We need to have a consensus on all of the information that we're looking at to make a decision. Because when I look at all of the amazing information that people have pulled together that they've shared tonight, and the information that you guys are going to see in the next two days, you're going to be overwhelmed at the smart, the intellect that is coming out of the group of people who have pulled stuff together that contradicts a lot of the information that is being presented from the administration. And so, I just think we need to make sure that we're all looking at the same numbers, so we can make some good decisions. So, together, we can come up with parents, community, administration, with multiple proposals, weigh the pros and cons, do a risk analysis, and determine what are the multiple options that we can propose to the board, so we can allow the board to make a decision along with the community. So, I encourage you to be bold and vote no on February 11th.[973.63][973.63][applause]
Alistair will be followed by Mitch Bartelt and Melissa Douglas.
Hi, my name's Alistair Dobie. I live at 828 Willow Street in Stillwater, and I am here as a parent, a community member, and a taxpayer. I want to use my time to, this evening, on a couple of topics, which is, one, the personal impact of Oak Park closing, and some touch on the topic of school culture. Firstly, I want to talk about my family. I have two children who attend Oak Park, one's in kindergarten and one's in first grade. My eldest son's on the autism spectrum, and he also has speech apaxia and dyspraxia. Why is this relevant, you might be thinking? Well, he's actually fully integrated into the mainstream class, and has been since he started at Oak Park. We've been very fortunate in that way. Unfortunately, due to a blunder by the school district three years ago in preschool, we have the firsthand knowledge of the impact of changing a school environment that can have. I'm not going to get into details, but at one point, his school, class, and teacher were all changed without our knowledge, and this resulted in a turn to some of the behaviors which we'd worked very hard with his therapist to kind of get, get rid of, or to contain, sorry. Fortunately, this was, you know, we removed him from the school district. It was all fixed and he's back at Oak Park, and the behavior ceased overnight. We had our normal, happy boy back. Since he's been at Oak Park, and his brother, they've flourished, and both of them love their school. It's been said to me that the school is not the building, and I agree. It's the people, the teachers, and the environment that they create that make the school. I fully agree that my children have found an environment in which they're thriving, thanks to the excellent levels of support, the fantastic teachers, and the Oak Park community. Changing my child's school will not just impact him, this will impact our family, and not for a short period. A change like this will disrupt his behavior, his education, and his sense of security. I tell you this not to tug on your heartstrings, that's not the purpose of this, but to make, or not to make out that we're special, but just to make sure you're aware that a decision to close Oak Park Elementary has a huge impact on our family, and we are just one of six or 700 families that you will be disrupting the likes of. As a family, we chose Stillwater, and specifically Oak Park, as it accommodates both of our children's needs. Depending on the boundary placement, which we don't know about, we may end up having to send our children to different schools, and my autistic son would be unable to function in certain environments. I'm quite stumped by the assertion that closing three schools, sorry, three successful schools will create equity. If the district is unable to provide the right level of services for children in other schools, it would make more sense to use the examples of the three successful schools and try and bring the other schools into line with that, versus take away what these students get, so that others might get less too. No detailed plan has yet been given as to how equity will be achieved, and despite the fact we have asked for email, by email, for more information on this, which is key to our child's education. And as a parent of a child with an IEP, it's quite unacceptable we've not got that information yet. During communication with the school board and others, I've been aware that the word emotion has been seen as a bad word to use. I actually disagree, because you're discussing a proposal that's going to have a massive impact on my children. So, my emotions are important, not something to be dismissed. I want to touch now on school culture a little bit. I am, in my job, I look after a budget of $100 million. If I came up with a plan with as many holes as this plan, I would be asked to go back and come back with the holes filled in. So, I'm asking you to do that as well. But from a cultural perspective, my job involves developing and creating and maintaining cultures. It's been said that the cultures of those three schools that would be to close would be emulated in the new schools. In my experience of 16 years, that's not possible. You cannot emulate a culture. You can try and copy, you can try, but you're never going to get what you've, what you've lost, unfortunately. Doesn't matter how hard you try. The other question is, have we asked the other schools that you want to change the culture of, would they like to change it? And have they been asked? And I suspect the answer is no. My final comment is, other people with more information on the, will give you more information on why this entire plan is flawed, and why the numbers don't add up, and why the timelines that have been used are extremely questionable. I just want to end with this. This entire process is actually disillusioning me. It's the first opportunity I've been given to moisten my opinions publicly with a five-minute time restraint. My children and their educational well-being are worth more than a five-minute time restraint and an incomplete plan lacking the fundamental details. Thank you.[1249.33][1249.33][applause]
Mitch will be followed by Melissa Douglas and Jalen Douglas.
Hi, my name is Mitch Bartelt. I live at 5663 O'Brien Avenue North in Oak Park Heights. I have two kids currently in the ECFE preschool. My, they will be in, or would be in the Oak Park Elementary. My son looks like will be going to Oak Park Elementary in kindergarten next year, and I'm hopeful it'll be longer. I didn't grow up in Stillwater. We haven't had kids in the school district for that long. But I have to say, this plan to close, particularly Oak Park Elementary, completely baffles me. It's located right in the middle of the district. By any measure I've seen, statistically, it's full, and it performs very well from any statistical measure I've seen. Closing this school would make it so a lot of kids won't be able to walk to school anymore. And this will disproportionately affect people from lower incomes, particularly relative to the Stillwater School District. I've worked most of my career as a civil engineer for different public organizations, and one big thing that we've tried to do in a lot of cases is make it so it's easier for kids to walk to school. So, this seems to be a really poor use of money for that goal, closing Oak Park. Presumably, my children would end up going from Oak Park to Lily Lake Elementary, from what I've been able to gather in the short time online that I've been aware of the proposal. The demographic data that's available on GreatSchools.org indicates statistically that Oak Park and Lily Lake are very similar in terms of the demographics of the students. However, Oak Park outperforms Lily Lake quite substantially. One thing with the bold plan, it looks like the three, three of the four top-performing schools in the district will be closed as a result of this plan. It just doesn't seem to make any sense. The citizens of Stillwater approved a referendum and have approved levies, so people here are willing to pay money to support a good education. And it's impossible not to draw a line between passing the referendum and creating a supposed excess capacity that's going to close these elementary schools. And I fear that making this move is going to actually reduce the quality of education people will receive who would normally go to Oak Park Elementary. In closing, I guess, it's been a really quick timeline for this proposal. I can picture the drawbacks of this proposal. My channels would be to the school board and to the administration to explain the benefits that will come to us from closing Oak Park Elementary. The way I see it is I'm paying more property taxes than I would if that referendum didn't pass, and my children will end up going to a school that's not as good.[1431.01][1431.01][applause] And that just doesn't seem to be a very responsible use of taxpayer money. So, I think we're all ears, but at this point, the vote's going to be February 11th. Based on the information we have, I urge everyone to vote no.[1446.33][1446.33][applause]
Melissa Douglas will be followed by Jalen Douglas and Parker Douglas.
Over here is a group, apparently. I'm sorry for my technical difficulties here. Your decision to close three elementary schools has been weighing very heavily on us as a family all through winter break. Two of my children attend Oak Park Elementary, and they greatly benefited from the autism cluster program there. Oak Park is a unique learning environment with a diversity unlike any other in the district. Your proposal to abolish this community, to create new offices for district staff, leaves me completely at a loss. How does this save money, and why can't this money be invested in maintaining our neighborhood schools, rather than new offices for administrative staff? How is this consistent with district commitments to the community during levy campaigns and the Bridge to Excellence planning process? Second, I am a city planner by profession, and have spent the last year and a half developing a bike and trail plan for the city of Stillwater. I do want to note that we did take a year and a half on a bike and trail plan, and we had over 15 public meetings. Just as a Your proposed plan will eliminate neighborhood schools in Stillwater, the walkability, health benefits, and community cohesion that they provide. Your proposal reduces our neighborhood schools to a math problem, and absolutely disregards the significant generational community repercussions of school closures. Finally, I've worked in the public sector for over 20 years, and have helped develop community consensus on many, many controversial proposals. Your proposal, develop in isolation without any community input, is a textbook example of what not to do. You held no public meetings in the process of developing the proposal, or when making, or before making a formal recommendation. The timeline is needlessly aggressive. The public hearing process is just barely, and I'm not even sure, meets the absolute minimum allowed by state statute. In any case, the best public process is always more, not less. You're holding your public hearings here at Oakland Junior High, the most inconvenient conceivable location. To the schools being closed, you're withholding relevant information such as the redistricting plan that should be shared before a decision is made. Your communications disparage previous planning efforts and community understanding. Intentional or not, the process is disrespectful to people who have been actively involved in this school district, given their time and resources. Given the approach to date, I have little hope of a change in course. But I continue to ask that we withdraw this proposal, that we begin again with humility, trust, and be open to learning. A public hearing is meant to be a two-way process.[1667.96][1667.96][applause] If you look it up, statutory definition, two-way communication. We're supposed to ask questions, you're supposed to answer them. In my experience, this doesn't meet the definition of a public hearing. We need to, we need to have that dialogue in order to move forward as a community on any decision. Thank you.[1695.63][1695.63][applause]
Hello, I am Parker Douglas, a student of Oak Park Elementary, and I want to say, a bigger school might not be exactly the best, best solution. My mom just made a pretty, a pretty good speech about it, but I, the reason, a reason why I think it would be bad is because the, in a smaller school in Oak Park, we all censor, like, only like a 200, 300 kids. We all sort of know each other as, sort of like a big family. And I have a bit, I have a story. I'm a bit of a family comedian, and I, and I, I think I got a start from, I think it was about second or third grade, I was, I had a reading buddy, and I was talking to him, I was cracking jokes, which I'm pretty sure were really bad.[1776.82][1776.82][laughter] And he laughed, and I felt good about, I felt good about it. It sort of made me like the path of comedy, and I sort of came up with my own material. And now I sort of cheer up my family when things are feeling a little down. And I think, you know... And I think in a bigger school, people want, will feel more like they're in an area where it feels like, feels less a comfortable atmosphere, more of them just sort of being there to learn, not sort of having, having heartfelt friendships with people who are older or younger. It, I think that, I think socialness is a very important, well, being social is very important. And I'm not Joe Cool or anything, I, but it, you know, being with friends just sort of helps me focus. Hello, my name is Jalen Douglas. I am Parker Douglas's twin brother. I also go to Oak Park. I had a way longer speech that involved me saying that it was, I grew up here, this is my childhood, I want my kids to be here, but I know you're just a bunch of robots. We don't care about that. But what I really think is, for kids who were like me in the autistic cluster, I think taking away Oak Park would be really, really bad detriment. Because when they're, like, if they get moved to a bigger school, sometimes since me being autistic myself, but not too large, not too high on the spectrum, I think that even I would get lost or get distracted in a noisy environment, and, and, but I, I also have been, I also, uh, uh, sorry. All I'm trying to say is that closing down Oak Park, I heard wasn't like was useless, but I'm just going to say, students grew up here, students learned here, and I, and I said you were robots, but I'm just saying, students are just not going to like you closing the school, not, I think, I think, I, I want my brother to stay here, I want my brother to learn here, be like me. And the school has had some rough times, but I still love it. I, yes, yeah, shocking. A kid living in school. Yeah, yes, those, those are my concerns. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break, and the next speakers will be Heidi Hickey, Angie Hong, and Julie Barkey.
Thank you. We'll get our next three speakers lined up.
All right, we have Heidi Hickey, Angie Hong, and Julie Barkey.
Nobody needs to be seated to hear me. I talk pretty loud, so. Good evening, thank you so much for this opportunity. Listening is really key right now. I would, so, tonight I want to speak to you about community trust and data gathering, related to this long-range facility plan, which I think you're all familiar with, and the Bold Initiative. So, a lot of people in this room are kind of of the next generation, they don't know me, but I volunteered a lot on levy campaigns over about fifteen years or so, maybe my math's off. Probably spending most of my time on that Yes to Kids Levy, the blue shirts. If those of you are not familiar with that, that's okay. And was the co-chair of Community Outreach, as you might know by now, community is super important to me. And I've worked for some, on some degree, to all the subsequent levies, doing literature, phone calls, and of course, the dreaded door knocking. I think we all know how that feels. If you haven't, you should try it. Okay. I have four children who've gone to school in the district, two who have now graduated, one at the junior high, one's still at Oak Park. My children will not be really that impacted by the bold proposal when it comes to any of the movement of boundaries or anything like that. So I'm just speaking from my personal perspective as to what I've observed over the last several years of being involved in this district. I am a passionate believer in this district, in public education as well. And I have advocated with community members on many tough issues that have faced this district. And I know some of us, old as we are, still shudder to think of the great laptop debacle that really centered around this building. Okay? You know, it eliminated a functioning board, it caused a very deep rift in our community that took so many years to neutralize. It was very impactful in a negative way. In the end, that experiment left us with very little data that really proved anything other than some kids have laptops, some kids didn't, and everyone had an opinion, and not necessarily a favorable one. In 2012, I was asked to work on a budget cutting committee. We were trying to set priorities to better communicate what types of cuts could occur should a levy not pass, and we did our job. The levy passed. It was an ugly process. Some of us were together for that process, Paula. Yes, looking at closing the schools was a part of that, and I was pretty vocal about it. We were given a number that represented how closing northern schools or just generic schools would save a certain amount of dollars, but very few, few details on how that number was achieved or arrived at. And I wasn't even really sure where it was all headed because the levy had passed. And then I kind of looked at that 2014 facility plan, not when it first came out in that November, but later. Now, I was underwhelmed by the level of data, and it seems kind of silly to even be called a long-range facility plan. And I'll tell you why. You're looking at a ten-year cycle. These buildings last a little longer than ten years. I think we know that. We will most likely live in our homes for more than ten years, right? Our kids are in a system longer than that. I've lived in my house for over twenty years, I don't intend to move anytime soon, I am very concerned that not enough things have been considered, and there has not been enough careful scrutiny. Are you really making these decisions just based on ten years of data? I can't believe that. I strongly urge you to go back to the drawing board. My hope would be that you will look as far as twenty-five, possibly even fifty years. Buildings will only get more expensive, and there is growth in the north, there, it will happen. I looked at the State Demographer's site today, their data for the turnover in housing for Marin and Acton is identical. Stillwater, where Oak Park is designated, is pretty high, it's like at nineteen percent, something like that. Board members, many of you have done door knocking to either earn your spots on the board or behalf, on the behalf of a levy. If you cannot knock on doors in my neighborhood, or withrow, or Marin with full confidence, knowing that these closures are the surest way for this district to have success, you must vote no on the 11th.
Angie Hong, Julie Barkey, and then Jill Greenhall.
Hi, everyone. My name's Angie Hong, I live at 604 Fifth Street South in Stillwater. This is little Charlie down here, he desperately wants to speak, and I told him, no. So, no. I know that I've sent a couple of emails, but wanted to make sure that I could speak in person, and I wanted to speak to five topics, and I will try to be as brief as possible. First, the importance of community involvement in plan development. And I just want to say that even the smartest people can benefit from outside perspectives. If you change your opinion tonight based on what you've heard, that doesn't make you weak, that makes you smart. That means that you are open-minded and that you are willing to make fact-based decisions and decisions based on opinions of people around the community. The whole community helps to fund our schools, and everyone should feel like the decisions are made through a fair and democratic process. The second topic that I'd like to address is walkability and access for low-income families. Walkability might be considered a luxury for some, but I have neighbors that live on both sides of me that don't have cars. And I live on the south hill. I know that there are plenty of low-income families in the Oak Park Boundary that are probably in the same situation. And families who do not have cars, their kids may get transportation to school, but they cannot come to a parent-teacher conference if it is far away and they can't walk to the school, and they certainly can't come to a public meeting like this tonight that is held down in Wesley, Clinton Township. Additionally, both Washington County and the state of Minnesota have walk-to-school initiatives, which were designed to encourage children to walk to school as a way to reduce obesity and obesity-related conditions such as diabetes. Three, social and economic impacts to older and rural communities from closing schools. I don't think that I need to speak much to this because we've all seen it happen when you drive through the country and you see what used to be a town, and all that's left is the closed-down one-room schoolhouse. Number four, uncertainty about projected cost savings and the likelihood of unanticipated expenses. When I saw that there could be a $1.2 million cost savings, I wanted to know what the experiences were of other schools. And so I looked up all of the research I could find, found research reviews published in the School Superintendent's Association, as well as the Rural School and Community Trust, which indicated that school consolidations often increase operating expenses due to transitional costs. And if families choose to leave the district, or voters fail to approve future levies and bonds, it would create additional financial burdens for the district. So, if there actually are cost savings, I would like a little bit more detailed information about how this money will be reinvested in the school district. Right now, the plan is to reinvest it to help children that are in need, but I would like some information about how many students are currently unable to receive the needed support, which schools is this? How will the cost savings be used to help these children specifically? And if the worst happens and the costs actually increase rather than decrease as a result of consolidation, then what happens? What further cuts will be made district-wide to balance the budget, and how will that impact those children? So finally, number five, uncertainty about enrollment data and growth projections. I looked at the 2014 Enrollment Projections Report prepared for the district by Hazel Reinhardt, and in it, she spent a lot of time discussing cohort survival projections and housing method survival projections. But basically, the current enrollment projections don't take into account housing turnover or new housing. After a six-to-seven-year stand, housing standsstill, we're seeing resurgence of new development and sales of existing homes as well. Met Council predicts 20% population growth across Washington County by 2030. Returning, retaining a small cushion for growth within existing schools will protect against overcrowding and the possibility of needing to build another new school a few years down the road. Thank you, and I urge you to vote no, and please take more time to work with the community on a new solution.
Julie Barkey, Jill Greenhall, and Michael Willhelme. Julie Barkey? Is she not here anymore? I'm going to move on, if she is here, she can let me know later. Jill Greenhall? Michael Willhelme, and then Ann Mozy.
Thank you. My name is Jill Greenhall, and I am happy to be here, not happy to be here, but happy to have the opportunity to speak. Superintendent Pontrelli, I'm sorry that we have never met before because I've been looking forward to meeting you and getting to know you, and this is not the best circumstance. So, let me tell you a little bit about myself, and I have been told that you are very accessible and available to meet. So, I look forward to meeting you under different circumstances in the near future. I am a communitarian, I'm passionate about my community, and I do that by, show that by being involved with my free time as a volunteer. I am a parent, my husband and I have raised three children in the school district, they are all doing well, two, one in college grad school, and one just day two today, in his first paying job out of college. He's a teacher. So, and I myself am a professional working in public education. And I also have an expertise in finance from a previous career. So, that's who I am. But I'm here today to not go into the Bold Initiative. I'm not going to go into what I think about all the schools that might be closed. I have a different perspective, and I hope it's valuable. And I would like to speak directly to you, Superintendent Pontrelli, because I know you're new in the community. I hope this is helpful. We live in a very historic community. We are arguably the birthplace of Minnesota, and one of the things that's historic about our community is our bridge in downtown Stillwater. And for a long time, people have said, "We need a new bridge." Well, decades and decades. However, we didn't build a new bridge for decades and decades, and we didn't do that because the public didn't think it was the right bridge. And if you want to know more about it, our next speaker, Mike Willhelme, could tell you all about it. But the original proposal was to tear down the historic lift bridge and build a new bridge. And what happened over the years, not ten, not twenty, but more than twenty years, which was an awfully long extended public input period, was that a better solution came about in the historic lift bridge that we use as an icon for those of us in Stillwater will remain with a new adapted use, and a new bridge is going in, and it's going to cost more, but the public was involved, and the public supports it. So, this is a historic community, and do not underestimate the power of the public to put the brakes on an initiative they don't believe in. So, a tale of caution. The second thing I want to talk about is just that, this is a time, and I think Heidi just mentioned this too, of eroding trust in the public. And let me just say, Tom, Amy, Paula, George, Mike, and Shelley, and Kathy, I, I respect you, I know you, I have voted for you, I've supported you, I've asked other people to vote for you, and if you haven't heard, I thank you for your public service, thank you. And Paula and Shelley, I am sure you probably didn't anticipate this when you worked so hard to get on the school board. But in the, I got Time Magazine this week, and on the cover of it was a story of Flint, Michigan. And in Flint, Michigan, they had an economic problem. And someone came in who didn't know the community too well, and they said, "I have a solution to solve your economic problem." And they rushed it through, it was a water problem, they needed to build a new water supply instead of waiting till the new one was built and then switching. They, you know, you've heard the news, they went ahead, and what resulted was poisoning of children. Now, you, Superintendent Pontrelli, love children, you are a professional, you must be awfully good because these people I admire hired you. And so, I, I want to see you succeed. However, what you're doing here with these, this proposal, I think, could have unintended consequences like the situation in Flint. And... like the situation in Flint. And while it is not poisoning people, it could be toxic for our community. And so, I just want to say, you know, this is a time of eroding public trust. I'm afraid that if you do go ahead with closing three elementary schools right now, it will be public relations suicide. It'll set us back. I love this community. I love these schools. It's, it's, that's a cost that I just don't want us to bear. My husband's a carpenter. He says, "Measure twice, cut once." It's a good adage. And so, I just think with all the passion that I've heard in this room tonight, and all these amazingly talented people, I've got some new friends I hope to follow up with, I think that maybe there, even though you have spent all this time studying, oh, my time's up, maybe there's a creative solution, and we can work together. Maybe these people run for office, get us more state funding. Maybe they'll have some creative idea. But thank you so much, and goodbye.
Michael Wilhelmie, Ann Mozy, and Jay Axelrod.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Wilhelmie. I live at 819 Everett Drive in Stillwater. I had two children who are graduates of Oak Park Elementary, Eleanor and Peter. One of them went through the GATE program. And they both had a great experiences at Oak Park. They're doing great at the high school and also at Stillwater Junior High now. A lot has been said tonight, a lot of passion in the room. Obviously, people feel passionate about their schools. I wanted to mostly talk about just some thoughts and share with you just from experience, having worked on the last, on the levy campaign for the, for the capital levy that we just passed. And I was thinking about the process that went through it. You know, that passed overwhelmingly, 57% of the district. The voters voted for it. I bet most of the people in this room probably voted for, for the bond referendum. And the magic of that was the process. The district did a fantastic job of gathering input from different buildings, putting together ideas, putting forth a really great question, and it was passed. And I can't help but contrast that process with this one. I, I, I think that the superintendent and her staff are doing the best they can. The goal of Bold is the right goal. We do have disparities that have to be balanced out somehow. But this process is really problematic. And when you, whenever you have a decision like this, there will, there will be winners and losers. But those folks who maybe won't get what they want or would like what they would, get what they would like, they have to feel heard. They have to feel like every stone was turned over, every idea was looked at. And I just don't think that we can say that that's happened in this process. So, I think that, that, I hope that February 11th comes, you recognize that the superintendent and her staff did their job. They, they put forth what they felt was their best effort, but the school board has a responsibility as well, too. I fear that if we do pass this now, after having promised the community through that capital levy in May, and not really meeting those, those promises that we made, that there will be serious long-term damage to the reputation of the school district that will outlive, you know, a lot of your service and lots of other folks. I mean, we told folks at Oak Park Elementary that we were going to put air conditioning in the building. And that, people said, asked me and my community, our neighborhood, "Why, why should we vote for this?" And I gave them the litany of reasons, and this was one of them. And it just, it feels like we would be breaking faith now to do something other than what we promised in May at this point. So, again, this is difficult conversations. Being a school board member is probably one of the most difficult and thankless tasks and important tasks in government, but it's important that you get it right. And, and please take the time to get it right. I guess that's, that's what I would say. When you, when you have a chance on February 11th, I hope that you'll ask for some more options and some more time to gather some more ideas, information. Thank you.
Ann Mozy, Ann Mozy, Jay Axelrod, and Clayton Heimke.
Good evening, everyone. Ann Mozy, I'm an attorney. I am also a mother. I have three kids. We moved out here in 2012. I live very close to Pine Point. We looked around at the different schools, and we picked Withrow. I had one kid that didn't fit as well into Withrow as I would have liked, and so we used your open enrollment perk, and we went to Oak Park with one. And I, my son is with me here. He was the one who stayed at Withrow. And his twin sister with blue hair is at Oak Park. And yes, we've had to see a therapist to talk about me letting her have blue hair, but she has blue hair, and she looks great. I thought you guys were geniuses. You have the perfect model, and you're, and I, I don't want to change my mind. I don't want to say you screwed it up. I want to say you're geniuses still. You have a lot of little schools for little people when they need little schools. And you let those cute little people go to other different little schools with different cultures so they can find the right place to be the best person. And then you put them in a little bit bigger school. It's kind of hard, you know? Junior high in seventh grade, and now you're talking sixth grade. It's hard. My kids are hearing a lot of stuff about sex and drugs, and, and bullying is outrageous, and the administration isn't on top of it. You don't have exit interviews. Where's the leak? I don't think it's in the little schools. I think it says you step up. But I still think you got to deal with the cost-effectiveness of a large school and a small footprint for each child. And so if you're going to make large schools, you got to do it at an age-appropriate curve, and Stillwater does that. And you know how I know that this is the right model? Because Minnetonka does that. And Minnetonka's school district has all these cute little elementary schools, small classroom sizes, never over 20. And they then feed two junior highs, which then feed one large high school. It's your same model. They're voted 52nd school district in the country. It's the only Minnesota school on the list of top 100. And you guys do it better because you pay about half for that quality. And you're talking about shutting it down. Crazy, crazy. Now, I see myself as a, a, a school-closing poster child. When I was in high school, the Minneapolis School Board couldn't balance their budget, and so they closed 20 schools, and they closed my school. They closed West High because it was in Uptown, and they turned it into a YMCA, and it's still a YMCA, or YW. I never went there. I'm still mad. And I was 15 or 16. I was in 10th grade when they did that. You're talking about kids that are six, seven, eight, nine, their whole neighborhoods, their whole communities. You're closing every school in the north district to bus them for an hour? Are you, I, I'm, I don't want to get too emotional, but that's not brilliant. Everyone knows that closing schools hurts kids, but you're hearing, not only does it hurt kids, but it hurts communities, and it'll hurt Stillwater, and I think they're right. Now, the other thing I want to point out to you before you cut me off on my five-minute time limit is today is Lyman Geary Day, ironically, January 26, 1996. There's a standard for you guys to live up to. A man who served 35 years on this board and brought community to, to life. He fought your, the school board's contentious decision to close Marine in 1990 because in 1954, when Marine, not Oak Park, so I'm sorry, it's the wrong school, but it's today, when Marine decided to become part of the public school system, y'all told them they would never, never, never close it, ever. That's a contract. And in 1996, Lyman Geary stood up here, and he told you that, and y'all listened. And it's the same contract, and it's still in place. You can't close Marine.
Jay Axelrod, Clayton Heimke, and Nicole Dahl. Is Jay here? We'll skip Jay for now. What about Clayton? Nicole? Nicole's here. Nicole is our last speaker, if the others aren't here.
Good evening. So first, I want to thank the people who have exchanged emails with me. Superintendent Pontrelli, you had a conversation with me last night, so thank you very much for your time. And to the board members that have exchanged emails with me. So I think... Oh, sorry. Nicole Dahl, Oak Green Avenue North in Stillwater. So first of all, I've been in the community for a long time, and I have to say, I got a little bit of a wake-up call. I realize you went to school a few years before or after me, so I'm feeling old tonight, so, sorry. So first thing, you know, I think, I think this is a really tough discussion. I work in a large corporation in the community. I'm a global project manager. I understand resources. I understand budget. I understand these are tough decisions. And I think what you're hearing from this community tonight, and unfortunately, a lot of people had to leave, this community wants transparency. This community wants the details. This community is intelligent. They're educated. They can understand the facts. And that's really what this community is asking for. I think when we look at the time that we have tonight, five minutes, it's really hard to go through all of the comments. And you're hearing a lot of those tonight from the community. The thing that I would like to ask for is, again, transparency in the data. So when we look at, for instance, the capacity numbers, and Superintendent, we talked about this last night. Oak Park is stated at a capacity of 475. If anybody who's been here for years like I have, does anybody know what it used to? What would the cost look like for Oak Park at those numbers? It would be the lowest elementary school in the district by $1,600 per student. How can we say we should shut down the lowest-cost elementary? We really need to look long and hard. As a global project manager, when I look at the total gap at 1.26 million against $100 million bond, it's 2%. In my company, that's a rounding error, 2%. We need to go back. We need to look at the details. We need options. We need transparency. That's what this community is looking for. We want to be engaged. We want to have a discussion, not a listening hearing. We want a discussion. How can we get that by February 11th?
I'll just do one more call to make sure we didn't miss Julie Barky, Jay Axelrod, or Clayton Heimke.
I guess that's it. Thanks for coming out tonight. We will be here tomorrow evening, starting at 5:00. And we'll be here Thursday evening, starting at 5:00 as well. Thanks to those of you who spoke tonight. And if you don't want to speak, but you want us to get information, as we said at the beginning, you know, you can write out your comments and get them to Barb or Carissa, and they'll see that the board gets them. So thanks for coming out tonight.